Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of supervisors, please. Supervisors Carroll, Morrissey, Gates.
Resilience passes unanimously.
Are excused. Supervisor Gray is absent. All right, Attorney Sam Hall, if you'd like to come up, please. Attorney Hall will be giving a presentation on the Jensen Hughes Emergency Readiness Assessment and an update on pending litigation related to August 2020 civil unrest.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just organize my notes here. Thank you, good evening. So, my name is Attorney Sam Hall. I'm the managing partner over at Cravelo Nicholson Hall. And in that capacity, represent Kenosha County in a fair amount of its outside civil litigation, civil rights cases. I want to begin my presentation and comments this evening by providing an update on pending litigation related to the unrest in 2020. It's a little bit of a unique situation because normally when you hear from an attorney on the update with pending litigation, we're in closed session. And, you know, we typically provide a fair amount of detail. We're an open session tonight, and so I still, I want to provide some public transparency with the status of those cases, but because we're an open session, going to limit the comments to information that's already publicly available. So there's no state secrets being shared here this evening. But at the same time, I think it informs the larger discussion that we'll get to afterwards related to the Jensen Hughes report as well. So with that, there are three main cases that are still pending related to the unrest in 2020. Within those three cases, there's multiple parties. The first that I'll reference is Alyssa Shukar and Scott Olson. Those are the two plaintiffs involved in a case. You may recall there was press coverage related to this case. These were the two reporters, and one was a reporter and one was a photographer who were allegedly hit with rubber bullets during the unrest. And so they brought personal injury claims and civil rights claims related to that. The other claim, or lawsuit or case that's still pending is brought by Justin Blake, Jacob Blake's uncle. This case relates to the use of a restraint chair at the time of booking in the jail when Justin Blake was taken into custody during the unrest. And the final case, which is by far the largest and most significant, is the estate of Anthony Huber and Gage Grosskreutz. Those cases are, they were brought separately but ultimately consolidated. Those were the individuals who were shot by Kyle Rittenhouse and have, are pursuing civil rights claims against Kenosha County and multiple other municipalities who responded to the unrest. So again, I'm not going to go into specific details, but I do wanted to, do want to provide an update on each of these cases briefly to talk about where they are and what we can expect down the road with, with both of them. With the first case, which is the Shukar and Scott Olson case, those cases are now fully through discovery. All the depositions have been taken. The document productions are all completed. And on behalf of the county, we have filed a motion for summary judgment seeking dismissal. That motion is fully briefed at this point. We are just waiting on the court, waiting on the judge to issue a decision. That could come down tomorrow, or that could come down six to nine months from now. It's really difficult to say. But this case is very similar to another case that we did previously receive a favorable decision dismissing the case. We had one other case involving someone who alleged a civil rights violation after they were hit with rubber bullets. And we were successful in getting a dismissal in that case. These cases are all unique, and this case is in front of a different judge, so you never can know for certain. But we feel optimistic with that case. The other case, or the next case I'll discuss is the Justin Blake litigation. Similarly, that case has now reached its end in terms of discovery, and we have a pending motion for summary judgment there as well. That case generally involves Mr. Blake being taken into custody, and I would describe it as being, him being hostile and certainly not cooperative while at the jail and going through the booking process. And as a result of that, officers who were working in the jail felt that they needed to use the restraint chair, at least temporarily, in part to ensure his own safety, but also the safety of others, until there was a better understanding even of who he was. He was refusing to identify himself. And so again, that case is now in front of the court, in front of the trial judge for a decision on a motion for summary judgment. The final, and as I said, the largest and most significant, is the case involving the estate of Anthony Huber and Gage Grosskreutz. As I mentioned, these are two individuals who were shot by Kyle Rittenhouse. There are pretty vast theory, legal theories in the case in terms of how exactly they're attempting to establish liability on the behalf of any government for essentially what is the actions of a private third-party individual. And again, I'm not going to go into all of the circumstances and legal theories and defenses, but I do want to, I want to reference that there's a very, very long runway in this case. The case has been pending now for three years, and we are not yet at the point of the plaintiffs disclosing their experts. We're not yet at the point of the defense on behalf of the county and the other parties disclosing their experts. And, you know, I've referenced these other two cases. We have filed motions for summary judgment. I fully expect that we will file a motion for summary judgment to seek dismissal in this case as well. But at this point, that is not due until March of 2026, and it is entirely possible, if not likely, that that date will get pushed back further as, it's kind of the last deadline on a case is this, the filing of summary judgment. And so there's been a lot of delays related to discovery. There's been a lot of discovery taken. I don't think I'm exaggerating to say hundreds of thousands, if not north of a million pages of documents and reports from every law enforcement entity that responded. There is, there is a lot going on in the case, and for both sides, it takes time. It takes time to get through that. And so I would anticipate there will come a day where we'll be talking about some or all of these cases in closed session, but I want to make the point particularly in that case that it is still very active and it is still very much ongoing, and that's likely to be the case for the foreseeable future. So with that, and kind of with that context, I wanted to spend a little bit of time, I guess, introducing you to the Jensen Hughes report that you are seeing for the first time tonight. I'm not going to insult your intelligence and read the whole thing for you. You'll see that, once you take the footnotes out and the bios, and it's about forty pages of narrative text. As I introduce this document to you, though, I want to make a couple of kind of high-level points. The first is that, and it's titled, it's an Emergency Readiness Assessment. That is not the same as an After Action Review. They have many similarities, but those are two different things. This is a emergency readiness assessment that is evaluating the county's emergency readiness for all sorts of different things. Our focus, certainly in the litigation I just described, has been the civil unrest of 2020. That was clearly an emergency situation, but it's far from the only emergencies that the county will face, whether that be floods, weather events. Knock on wood, you have Country Thunder this weekend. Hopefully that goes off without any, any issues, but emergencies take all sorts of different forms. And so this report, you'll see, it certainly discusses the unrest in 2020, but it's far from its focus. It really is a forward-looking document that looks back on prior events, certainly for lessons to be learned, but it is much more forward-looking to provide an assessment and suggestions for preparedness in the future. Beyond the, the, the structure of it and its intent and purpose, I want to highlight at least five different areas that it covers and that it, to me, provides some useful and important information. And again, I'm not going to, there's, there's more than five points to this report, but there are five that, as I read it, it struck me as being significant enough to highlight. You know, the first would be a kind of a general, my interpretation of Jensen Hughes' report is that during the civil unrest in 2020, the Emergency Management Division, you'll see it parenthesized as EMD. My language, not so much theirs, is that they would indicate that it didn't run efficiently. It didn't operate efficiently, that there was certainly a recognition by stakeholders and by leaders that there was a need for help and there was a need for assistance, but that those calls for help and those calls for assistance weren't overly streamlined. They were coming from multiple directions. It was very, you know, as you read it, it was a, an assessment of, you know, we know we need help and everybody's reaching out for help in, you know, whatever contacts they have, whatever directions that they have. And, you know, it's hard to be overly critical of that because when you are in the throes of an emergency, you know, and some may experiences even in a personal life or professional capacity, it's an all-hands-on-deck type of feeling oftentimes. And, you know, you rely on personal, personal relationships, you know, and so if you, you know, if someone in law enforcement has a contact in the State Patrol and it's, you know, hey, we need assistance like yesterday, it's not unusual that somebody would, would place that personal call to say, hey, we need some help. Is that how it's supposed to occur, though? No, it's not. And so, you know, what I think you'll see in this report is that, you know, there is some discussion of really how to make that EMD, the Emergency Management Division, operate more efficiently so that when the help is needed, whether it be a situation of unrest, whether it be a tornado touching down, a massive fire, whatever the case may be, that the protocols that are in place are used and that you don't have individuals making kind of the one-off calls for, for help. And I, it's a fair point. Somewhat related to that is a second point that I'll just highlight. You know, there seems to be a discussion of a general hesitancy to activate the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. And I think hand-in-hand with that is a discussion of, you know, the Emergency Operations Center, if you have it, you should utilize it with some regularity, okay? That, you know, you don't wait for something that is at the level of the 2020 unrest to operate the EOC. You know, it's, it's obvious with the 2020 unrest that the EOC would be activated. If you have a tornado that touches down somewhere in the county, should the EOC be activated? If there's, you know, smaller incidences, smaller events, should the EOC be operated? And, you know, ultimately, as an attorney, I'm not stepping into that discussion. Those are decisions that get made by people far smarter than I am that have more practical experience. I can recognize that it's a, it's a really tough call because on one hand, I think the point you will see Jensen Hughes make is that the more often that you are, you know, operating out of the EOC, the more familiarity that stakeholders and individuals involved will get. They'll get more experience working in that environment and knowing what to do and what not to do and that sort of things. That, that makes sense. But on the other side of the equation, you can't open the EOC and activate the EOC every time there's a tornado warning in the county. You know, at some point, you get into a, you know, the boy that cried wolf scenario where it can't be so normalized that it's, you know, not a thing. And so where exactly you draw that line is why you have a great sheriff here to make that decision. And, and so, but again, you'll see that that is, you know, a subject of, of discussion. The third point that I would make from this report is they certainly identified room for improvement with communications with the public during, again, any type of an emergency, whether it be the unrest, whether it be, you know, a weather-related event. And, you know, I think that's a fair assessment of just about any government that's responding to critical incidents, no matter, you know, where they occur. Because the point is, is we are very accustomed and used to relying on the mainstream media to push information out. What we, and when I say we, I mean government in general, what we don't often recognize is that there's countervailing forces at play often, putting out misinformation and incorrect information, whether they're doing it intentionally or accidentally, that if you're relying solely on third parties to get your message, to get instructions out to the public, you really, you kind of do so at your own peril. And so, you know, the, the takeaway, I think, again, for any local government, is to really invest in your own communication infrastructure so that when it comes time to get messages out to the public, you're able to do it effectively and, and be in control of that message. And, you know, again, I think that's a fair assessment, and it's not one unique to, to Kenosha County. The third is, you know, the, certainly a desire or a recommendation to do more tabletop exercises. And so, you know, what a table, and I know that the sheriff's office will be speaking as I wrap up here, but to, to, when, when we prepare for emergencies with government, government is very good at getting all the government leaders and the public sector stakeholders together to say, how are we going to handle this? Whose job is to do what? But it's, we don't often, or don't often enough, involve the private sector and other stakeholders who may have a role to play. And so one of the points made by Jensen Hughes, which I think is, is good, is that, you know, the Kenosha, the larger and greater Kenosha County community is excellent. You've got a lot of, of great stakeholders, whether it be from hospitals, whether it be schools. You've got a lot of folks who are ready to help and that are in a position to help. And trying to identify in advance how you can identify that and how you can leverage that as part of an emergency response is really important. And part of that is through doing tabletop exercises of, okay, if, you know, heaven forbids, you know, heaven forbid a, a school shooting were to occur, how can we get all of our different private sector stakeholders together to, to provide resources to, to support the, the larger community? And so there's, you know, certainly a recommendation to, to do more of that tabletop exercise training and to do it not just with the, you know, public sector employees. And then again, the final point I'll make, and there's, you know, much more as you read this report, you know, you're going to see as you review this report, at various points, recommendations of revisiting policies, of the, you know, a recommendation that the sheriff revisit, you know, you name it, you know, a certain policy. I want to make a point on that as I conclude the remarks, to say that, you know, it's fair for any outside review to suggest, hey, why don't you take a look at that policy? Or why don't you review that policy and see if it still fits? The point I would make, though, is that, you know, I've reviewed the sheriff's office's policies many times. I think they're perfectly fine. They're certainly constitutional. That said, policies do get reviewed and they do get revised from time to time, and that's certainly fair. And, you know, if that, as a result of all of this, if the sheriff were to come back and say, you know, we've taken a look at this and actually didn't change a single policy, that would not be alarming to me at all. You know, again, I think the policies that are on the books right now are constitutional. Kenosha County obtains its, the sheriff's office obtains its policies through Lexible, which is a national company whose, you know, sole job it is, is to prepare policies that get used for law enforcement organizations, and they're very, very good at it. And, you know, occasionally they need tweaking, but they are very, very good at it, and it costs a lot of money. But they, they do a really good job at it. You know, and be aware that a company like Jensen Hughes would also gladly take money from the county to draft those policies instead of Lexible. So, you know, I guess my, my larger point would be, as you're reviewing this and you see a suggestion of, boy, we think that policy should be revisited. That's fair, and I certainly hope the sheriff's office does that. I know that they already have. But part of it may also be a sales pitch written in there, too. And so just, you know, be aware of that as you review those comments. And again, it's by no means a, I wouldn't describe it as a large theme in this report, but it is something that does come up periodically, and I think it's fair to review them. But again, the, I, as the lawyer in the room, I want to just reiterate that I think the county's policies, and particularly the sheriff's office policies, were then and continue to be constitutional. So with that, I, again, I don't want to reread the entire report for you, but I did want to provide that context, and I believe that the chief deputy or the sheriff is, also has some comments.
Not easy to follow, Sam Hall. But what I like to do is I like to review a couple key points from the assessment. If you review this, you'll see, you'll, this will be familiar with you. Activation of the Emergency Operations Center, it will take place when it's appropriate and needed and without hesitation. Training for all three roles in the Emergency Management Division have been addressed. They all received director-level training. In addition, our directors currently enrolled in the Certified Emergency Manager course, which is above the requirement from the state. EM Director job description is being updated to enhance the clarity of the role specifically. Policies and procedures are being reviewed and updated as needed with direction from council and Lexible. The Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, SEP, was written before the county had implemented the communication director role. That created some inefficiencies in the plan, however. The SEP is in the planning phase. It is a multi-year project led by WEM. According to WEM, it is scheduled for completion in mid-26. This update will address all the issues listed in the Emergency Support Functions in the report. WEM and Texas A&amp;M Engineering Extension Service, it's a training facility, training organization, have provided training countywide. Kenosha Fire now has a certified trainer, which gives us more opportunity for courses and substantial savings as well, I'd like to point out. And those courses will be countywide. We have a tabletop exercise scheduled for 2027 through the Integrated Preparedness Training Plan. This training plan spans three years and has three priorities. These priorities are set by over 300 stakeholders locally to throw at the county regarding what they would like to see in this training. It's done via survey, and that's sent up by the emergency management team, and that is grant, a grant requirement from WEM. Now, on communication. EM has built alert sense, excuse me, alert sense groups for public officials so they can receive notifications on events pertinent to their respective areas of responsibility. EM has consistently worked on building better relationships with all the stakeholders, stakeholders in the county. For the public alerts and alert sense, EM has made a concerted effort to make the public aware of the ability to sign up for emergency alerts. This has been done through several ways, through social media, at public events, right at the sheriff's office, and on our website. And during the county fair, we're launching a text-to-join campaign. So if you get near Deputy Sheriff, you'll probably get signed up. The city of Kenosha also has alert sense, which can send messages back and forth to us in real time. So I would urge any citizen of Kenosha County who would like to be alerted via call or text to contact Kenosha Emergency, Kenosha County Emergency Management at (262) 605-7900 and get added to that system. You can also go to the Kenosha County Emergency Management homepage, scroll down, it'll be in the right-hand corner, and just click on the link to sign up and receive, receive the emergency alerts. We have also just started implementing new software called ReadyOp. ReadyOp is very robust software. If you're familiar with it, you know what I'm talking about. It assists in internal communications and with the county and municipal leadership, which will provide services. So what it is, is ReadyOp is a secure web-based platform to support planning, response, command, and communications for single agencies and unified commands. ReadyOp is designed for fast, efficient access to information as well as the ability to plan, coordinate, direct, and communicate with multiple persons, groups, or agencies. It's used for local, statewide, and nationwide operations, multi-agency response, coordination, and communications. Communication, how large-scale ReadyOp is, it's utilized by the NFL, the Packers use it. And when we were soliciting to purchase this, every agency in Brown County is on this ReadyOp, and all the plans are available to everyone in real time, all the operations plans. It's phenomenal software. So it's also by NASCAR, and there's, just the list is very long. But currently, it's being used by the operations at Country Thunder. So I just wanted to touch, based on some of the things that we worked on and we plan on working on. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question through the chair to our sheriff, if I can follow up on one point. Um, just from the presentation at this point, it would seem that the emergency operations center and the frequency of usage of that is one of the key, uh, components. Not to actually have a delineation of how that occurs going forward, although it is a recommendation, but if we could just perhaps be kept abreast of what the schedule for the EOC utilization practices, trial runs. I think that'd be kind of something we could look forward to as being a beneficial type notification. So if it's possible, Sheriff, could we be in the loop on those, uh, EOC training exercises, how it's going to play out from this point forward? That's my comment. Thank you.
Absolutely. Supervisor Grady, absolutely. And we can actually put together a presentation and a training so you can see actually that, and who's all there. We've actually rearranged the whole place and the way it operates in the last couple of years. To my dismay, I liked the way it looked before. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is the presentation on the Jensen Hughes report. If supervisors, if you have any questions or if you'd like a more detailed explanation, feel free to reach out to, um, Joe Cartimone, Sam Hall, the sheriff's office, Sheriff's Order Chief Deputy Miller, and they'd be more than happy to answer questions. With that, the presentation is complete, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by Supervisor Decker, second by Supervisor Girston, all in favor? Aye, opposed, we are adjourned. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call of supervisors, please. Twenty-one supervisors are present, Supervisors Carroll and Morrissey are excused. Citizens' comments. Are there any citizens wishing to speak? Feel free to come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, it's Raymond Cameron, 5313 20th Avenue, Kenosha, Wisconsin. Uh, I originally intended to come here to request that the county board consider the question of transit funding, more specifically, public transportation. Uh, the idea that was, um, brought up by SOAPAC, Southeastern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, as I'm sure you all are aware, was that one of the ideas was to have, um, a sales tax dedicated specifically to transit from a little short discussion I had with somebody who was on the Transit Commission, because my term ended in June 7th of this year. Uh, it was apparently would generate like about, you know, millions of dollars just to have a half-cent sales tax for transit, period. And why do I say this at the county level? Because there seems to be some problem with being able to link up public transit countywide. A lot of the jobs that I remember, um, then's, uh, assembly person, uh, Mr. Steinbrink, who was also at that time the Pleasant Prairie, um, or the president of the Pleasant Prairie Board of Superv- Trustees, excuse me. Um, well, he would mention a lot of jobs, but he would talk about Kenosha County. And if you look at, you know, how many manufacturing jobs have been lost over this, I don't know how, how many years in Kenosha, it's like, where did they all go? You know, or can, and if they are technically in the city limits of Kenosha, can you get there by public transit? And being at the way the, the cars have, places are gone, you know, up to what you could at one time buy a house for, you know, 30 years ago. I never thought I'd actually be 66 years old. But, um, I was very intrigued though by this whole thing of the emergency operations, you know, the readiness thing or whatever, because I actually went through cert training back in 2007. Probably the only person that's disabled now, I'm also an older person as well. And, uh, this whole idea of preparedness is very necessary, I believe, particularly with what I saw with my own two eyes walking along State Highway 158, otherwise known as 52nd Street. And one time I saw an individual during that whole, as they call it, civil unrest. I call it insurrection and rioting and arson. But, um, you, I saw a gentleman with, uh, all four limbs on top of a vehicle, couldn't believe my eyes. I tried to call various, you know, the city, the county, oh, we're too busy. Where I tried calling the state petroleum, I tried to get this person, you know, somebody ticketed, hoping this would stop it. You know what I got usually? I ended up getting a text message saying, you know, there was a curfew. And, and I was asking, well, what's being done, you know? Uh, the, the Max Deli that was not too far from where I live, gone because of all of this. Um, and so I would urge this body to enact a half-cent sales tax for public transit because I think we're going to really need it to link up with jobs, et cetera. And when you look at the number of people that come up here, um, you know, from other areas to, yeah, Kenosha County benefits or State of Wisconsin benefits, if they could get employment, it would save the county and the state a lot of money. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to speak? Feel free to come up to the podium. State your name and address for the record and also write it on the sheet.
Okay. My name is Julie Arnold, 3802 14th Avenue. I have a question and a complaint. I'll go start with the first one, because it's fun. Um, so I'm a graphic designer and I've been in the design field for over 20 years. And I just moved back to Kenosha. I grew up here and I moved back here, um, from South Milwaukee. And I noticed that nobody's flying any kind of flag for the town. And I don't know if you knew in Milwaukee, but they had this big competition on trying to get the people's flag in Milwaukee. And it turned out really cool. I decided that I would try to design one for Kenosha using the Kenosha K. And it's super cute and I would like to present it to you. I don't have it with me today, but I'd like for you guys to just take a look at it and see if it's something that maybe we can adopt. Okay, that's good. Okay. Um, the second part was, is the complaint, is, um, I have an invisible disability. Um, I have like an MS kind of thing where I, my muscles aren't, don't work all that great after a lot of exertion. And on the 4th of July, we, I, we looked up everywhere and it said to take the trolley with the tires and it would go down a route, down to the lighthouse and around Simmons Park and up, back up to where the bus depot was. Well, that day, we got to the bus depot and, um, we asked the guy which bus it, or which trolley it was. So we sat on it and we start going and the guy goes, no, I can't go out down on Simmons Island anymore. They changed that this morning. And I'm like, really, this morning? And he said, yeah, so the closest we can bring you to the fireworks is Marina Gardens. I'm like, we have to walk all the way from the Marina Gardens to the lighthouse? Like, that's crazy. So anyway, we ended up doing it. And, um, when we hiked back up the huge hill, there was no trolleys coming back to pick people up. So we, I had to walk, my husband and I had to walk all the way back to the bus depot from pretty much the lighthouse. And what I think that tells people or tells the city is that, well, there was obviously no, um, uh, traffic or vehicles allowed on Simmons Island for the 4th. And that pretty much just says, you know, you can only go down to the, to the lighthouse if you're able. So how are disabled people supposed to go down there if no vehicles are allowed for that? I'm, it's been what, 11 days now? And I'm still having problems with recovering from that. And I think that that was a really bad decision on the morning of the 4th. You know, I mean, I, there were several websites that said, go down to the bus depot and take the trolley, la, la, la. And then it was canceled. So I was really disappointed and I'm, I was, I'm really hoping that for next year, that you will reconsider letting that trolley go down for people that have issues like me. So is there a time where I can come back to just, to show you the flag? Would that be next meeting? Anybody?
If you'd like, you can bring it at our, our next board meeting. If you'd like to share it. It would be the first Tuesday in August.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other citizens wishing to speak? Any other citizens wishing to speak? Any citizens wishing to speak? Seeing none, citizens' comments are closed. Announcements of the chair. I do not have any announcements this evening. We do have youth and governance in attendance. Tonight we have Timothy Kudjasev, Ethan Drain, Kenley Dedinsky, and Andrew Serta in attendance. Nice to see you all here tonight. Thank you for coming. Moving on to supervisor reports, Supervisor Grady.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We have a relatively brief agenda for the rest of this evening and I intend to keep it this way. There's plenty of Public Works material that could be disseminated, but we'll just, uh, give you the, uh, high points, shall we say. Um, we had our last meeting, the 23rd of last month, at the new Public Works facility at Center Construction. So thank you all for attending, those that came. You know, we had the design element, we had the construction paper, we had supervisors, county board supervisors. So it was a good, a good info thing. And subsequent to that, we had our regular committee meeting. But I'll start out with special projects and we're going to go to KCDC, which is Department of Corrections out there in County H. Um, we're finishing up phase three and four of HVAC replacements, the roof units. It's been quite an involved thing, just the amount of time and expense. It looks like we're on the final lap and we're, we're pleased that that's occurring. We have two backup generators that are going to be installed in the near future. The one at the Kenosha County Center, the generator's in place. It's a backup generator and it will be wired and functional in the fourth quarter of this year. Uh, same thing at Brookside. We had a period of time where the power was shut down over by Brookside, um, Bradford High School and so forth. And that'll be done again this particular quarter, third quarter, that'll be all taken care of. So infrastructure stuff's moving along pretty well. Out at KCC, we're talking about redundancy for dispatch. And one of the things that came to our, uh, understanding was that if the dispatch at the Kenosha County Center went down, there would not be a redundancy downtown here we could depend upon. So, uh, Mr. Martinelli's taking lead on that. We're going to have redundancy and I can advise you as that progresses. Ceremonial courtroom, high-energy, high-profile project that's moving along quite nicely. I think we're pretty well aware of that. Um, just to the north here, public underground gasoline diesel fuel tank, storage and placements. That'll be done at the end of the year. That's being replaced. Um, I'm going to jump now to Kemper and just kind of give you a brief overview of what's going on there. We have water infiltration, infiltration projects, phase four and phase five, that are undergoing current renovation. Uh, we have a shingle roof replacement, we have a flat roof replacement. So there's always things to be done on an aging building. Um, more to the special projects with Kemper, we have chapel repairs and facility condition assessment. These are both being done by Insight and we've chosen them as a contractor, um, I should say advisor to our contractors, because a lot of this is historic and it's got to be done to a certain specific, um, methodology to maintain the historic status. We have the, uh, shoreline repair we're taking a look at. And thankfully, we've had some people take a look at the extreme cost involved in doing shoreline revetment. And we've taken our cue from Milwaukee County and City of Kenosha, who brought in a new contractor called Red Barn Design. So we're currently soliciting bids from them to see if we can get a more realistic approach to that low line area. If you take a look at that shoreline down there, Kemper, Anderson, it's kind of a low spot and we would want to make sure that any investments we go forward with are protected adequately. Um, Old Suddler's Playground, we're looking at new design for the playground itself. Again, you have to select an independent contractor because it's a very, it can be a litigious thing in terms of making sure that it's built to a certain specification. Taking a look at the Pike River Phase Three, that would be the easternmost, um, renovation of the stream banks at Petrifying Springs Park as it borders onto the Parkside property. That is under construction and will be finished up by the end of the year. So that kind of wraps it up for those things. Uh, let's go on to golf. Golf's doing very well. As you know, we had quite an event that was a sad thing at, uh, Brightendale. We had all the trees that were knocked down. But still, despite that little minor setback, we've got some good rounds going. As of 6:16, 25, 36,000 rounds. As of 6:16, 24, we had 38,000 rounds. So we're just maybe 2,000 rounds below, 2,500 rounds below, but still doing quite well overall. Um, other things we can discuss in the future. Uh, facilities, here at the courthouse, we have the south ramp that's undergoing renovation. That's the one that's the approach that faces the, uh, street that we're on here. What else do we have going? Uh, courthouse entrance roof replacement project, that should be finished in the third quarter. They've been working on overhead doors at Kenosha County Center, doing some work there. Brookside carpet and window sill replacement project, that's been awarded and that will be finished in the fourth quarter of this year. We have some future projects coming up, but, um, I think that's about it. That concludes my report. You will see several resolutions coming forward, um, through the highways department and, uh, they'll be coming up shortly. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you Supervisor Grady. Supervisor Brown.
I want to thanks Sheriff Zerner, Lieutenant Ruth, Deputy Jones, and all those on the sheriff's, in the sheriff's office, who facilitated my participating in a ride-along on third shift on Friday night. It was an AB Fab opportunity and I encourage everyone to participate in it. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Nordigan.
Thank you Chair Uhas. Uh, as a reminder, Country Thunder is this weekend in Randall. If you are going to attend or if you need to be in that area, please be aware that it's going to be really a nightmare to drive in and around there at times, not all the time. So just be aware of the increased traffic, the amount of people that are in the area and, uh, probably visiting the local establishments, we hope. So just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Nordigan. Any other supervisor reports? Seeing none, supervisor reports are closed.
County Executive Appointments, 43 Christopher Hannah to serve on the Kenosha County Legal Emergency Planning Committee.
Refer to Judiciary and Law Enforcement Committee.
44 Jeffrey Martin to serve on the Kenosha County Veterans Service Commission.
Refer to Human Services Committee.
Old Business Ordinance, second reading to required. Ordinance 31 from the Planning, Development, and Extension Education Committee and ordinance regarding a proposed amendment to the text of the Kenosha County General Zoning and Shoreland Flood Plane Zoning Ordinance to amend section 12.02.130C and 1A of the separated adopted flood plane ordinance related to official maps and revisions to reference the FEMA-approved letter of map revision associated with the south branch of the Pike River. This passed unanimously at committee. Supervisor Girston was excused.
Supervisor Brown.
Move Ordinance 31, please.
Moved by Supervisor Brown, seconded by Supervisor Brookhouse, Supervisor Brown.
The flood map for the south branch Pike River was revised and approved by FEMA and is to take effect on July 25th, 2025. The Planning, Development, and Extension Education Committee approved it unanimously and we ask for your support this evening.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. Discussion Supervisor Franco.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Any discussion on Ordinance 31? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 31 passes unanimously.
New Business, Resolution 123 from the Human Services Committee, a resolution to approve the appointment of Deborah Deal to serve on the Kenosha County Commission on Aging and Disability Services. This passed unanimously at committee. Supervisor Poole was excused.
Supervisor Franco.
I would move Resolution 123.
Moved by Supervisor Franco, seconded by Supervisor Nordigan. Supervisor Franco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Human Services Committee passed a resolution appointing Deborah Deal to serve on the Kenosha County Commission of Aging and Disability. Ms. Deal has served as a certified medical assistant for over 27 years, which makes her experience highly relevant for the position. She's also served on the Gateway Medical Assistant Advisory Board. The committee asked for the board's approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Franco. Any discussion on Resolution 123? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes unanimously.
Resolution 124 from the Public Works and Facilities and the Finance Administration Committees, a resolution to authorize the Director of Highways to accept and utilize $40,000 from One Energy Development for road repairs due to construction traffic associated with Bristolwood Solar Project. This passed at both committees with Supervisor Nudo voting nay. Supervisors Belsky and Decker were excused from the Public Works and Facilities Committee.
Supervisor Grady.
Move Resolution 124.
Moved by Supervisor Grady, seconded by Supervisor Gents. Supervisor Grady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an anticipatory resolution where we make an estimate of the impact that a contractor will have on our roadways, attempts to secure the funding, and then once the project is completed, well, I should say, I'm not sure of the order of how the money's transferred, but it basically takes care of anticipated damage to our roads that we'll have to repair. And you'll see that Resolution 125 is similar in its nature. It passed our committee. We ask your approval this evening.
Thank you, Supervisor Grady. Any discussion on Resolution 124? Seeing none, this does require a 2/3 vote. If you're in favor of the resolution, you will vote yes. If you're against, you will vote no.
Resolution 125 from the Public Works Facilities and the Finance Administration Committees, a resolution to authorize the Director of Highways to accept and utilize $45,000 from One Energy Development for road repairs due to construction traffic associated with Strawberry Creek Solar Project. This passed at both committees with Supervisor Nudo voting nay. Supervisors Belsky and Decker were excused from the Public Works and Facilities Committee.
Supervisor Grady.
Move Resolution 125.
Moved by Supervisor Grady, seconded by Supervisor Gents. Supervisor Grady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Similar in nature to the preceding resolution, this is now just a different location, involves Strawberry Creek Solar Project. We passed this in committee and asked your approval this evening.
Thank you, Supervisor Grady. Any discussion on Resolution 125? Seeing none, this does require a 2/3 vote.
Yes. Okay. 20, it should be 20 yes, would it be shown that Supervisor Stocker voted yes, and 1 no from Supervisor Nudo. Resolution 126 from the Public Works Facilities and Finance Administration Committees, a resolution to approve a permanent utility easement for County Trunk Highway Q between Route 165, H4 LLC, and Uline and Kenosha County. This passed unanimously at both committees. Supervisors Belsky and Decker were excused from the Public Works Facilities Committee.
Supervisor Grady.
Move Resolution 126.
Moved by Supervisor Grady, seconded by Supervisor Gents. Supervisor Grady.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, a rather routine item of business here, so construction can be continued on, there can be utility easement. We need this to have officially documented for the county, passed our committee unanimously, I believe it did. And our Director of Highways is here if you have any further questions. We encourage your approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Grady. Any discussion on Resolution 126? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 126 passes unanimously.
Resolution 127 from the Finance Administration Committee, a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed $21,410,000 in general obligation promissory notes, providing for the notification and sale of said notes and other related details. This passed unanimously at committee.
Supervisor Gents.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move Resolution 127.
Moved by Supervisor Gents, seconded by Supervisor Nudo. Supervisor Gents.
Thank you. This resolution authorizes the bonding for 2025 to fund the projects that we approved in the 2025 budget. The board approved the initial resolutions with the budgets. We will go to sale August 19th. There will be a resolution on that date to approve the sale. This debt, just for everybody's information, is going to be, this debt issue is going to be 10-year notes. We're not into the 20 anymore, 20-year notes or bonds included with this debt issue. So if you have any questions, we do have Finance Department behind me here, and our committee approved it unanimously, and we would ask for your support.
Thank you, Supervisor Gents. Any discussion on Resolution 127? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 127 passes unanimously.
Do we need to do a roll call?
Not a roll call? No. I don't think so. They're just permission to go to sale.
Claims, 40, Lamont Simmons, personal injury.
Refer to Corporation Counsel.
41, Paul Malawaski, property damage.
Refer to Corporation Counsel.
Approval of the June 15th, 2025 minutes by Supervisor Meadows.
Supervisor Meadows.
Move to approve the amendments as currently published.
Moved by Supervisor Meadows, seconded by Supervisor Decker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes pass, approved. Moved to adjourn by Supervisor Decker, seconded by Supervisor Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.